And I was going through your bag trying to figure out what was in there. I thought somebody was handing out goodies from A W S.
Don't you wish. Yeah, they were and I got them all.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the February 13th, 2012 Waschuggal City Council Workshop Meeting. Rose, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Russell?
Here.
Councilmember Plinsky, Councilmember Greenlee, Councilmember Lindsay?
Present.
Councilmember McDaniel?
Here.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Here.
Councilmember Freeman?
Present.
And Councilmember Plinsky and Greenlee have asked to be excused.
Thank you. Do we have any members of the public this evening that would like to address council before we get started? Okay. Our first item on the agenda this evening is some updates and discussion with Councilmember Melissa Smith from the City Camus regarding the Regional Transportation Commission and Council Communications. Melissa, welcome.
Hi. I've been here on this capacity. So, Melissa Smith?
I'm not sure.
It's like ours. Low battery. I can, I think I can speak loud enough.
No worries.
Melissa Smith, 1235 Northwest 7th Avenue, Camus, Washington. And I'd like to welcome the new members to your board. And I hope you enjoy it. And as you're aware, you, thank you for electing me as the representative for RTC. This is a new venture for me as well. And I just, so I just want to come over, introduce myself, and assure you that when there is anything that comes up for a vote, I will be sure to engage conversation with you folks. And majority rules, regardless of my own personal feelings on an issue. I may speak 'em, but I will go with what the majority says. I have given Rose some items. We just had our first meeting on the 7th, so I just kind of sat and listened and took some notes. And what I thought might be pertinent information for you, for your review, and if you have any questions, Rose can give you the information later. And you can contact me if you have any questions, concerns. And I want to know from you, how do you want me to communicate? I mean, if there's nothing going on at a meeting, just email and say nothing new to report? Or what would you like for feedback?
Email's generally pretty easy, but up to council on how you get, get the information from Melissa.
That's perfect of me.
Is that okay?
Thanks for asking.
The RTC does feel that East County has been neglected for quite a while. You know, they've been focusing on, you know, I-5 corridor and whatnot. And they talked about maybe later this year of doing some joint workshops out here, which I thought was a great idea. So, I'll keep my ears open for that and really press to try to get the board to come out here and have a joint meeting with Camus and Waschuggal. So, they can hear everybody's concerns or ideas, things like that. So, that's all I want to say.
Awesome.
All right.
Well, that's easy.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Questions, comments? Dave?
Just one comment real quick.
Sure.
There are three types of issues that would, I think, interest the majority of the council here. They are construction projects that affect this area, Camus-Washuggal area.
I've got that in the packet you'll be getting.
The Columbia River Crossing?
Yes.
Because that affects all of us?
Yes.
And light rail, because that affects all of us.
Absolutely.
Those are the three big ones.
Yep. That's my agenda as well.
Okay.
And I think I've kind of captured that in the packets that you'll be getting later from Rose to kind of highlight. And I've got some little asterisks that I thought were pertinent to us, you know, on everything.
I look forward to working with you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Melissa, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, agenda bills. Jim, you've got three items for us.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor, members of the council. Yes, just three pretty straightforward agenda items tonight. One is our Thyssen Krupp elevator maintenance agreement. That's the elevator over in the social services building. And that is $125 a month if we're taxes, as you can see there. So, we are asking council's approval to authorize the mayor to sign the Thyssen Krupp professional service agreement. Are there any questions on, on that agenda item?
Joe?
Yes. By law, we're supposed to ask someone that we're paying, correct, to provide maintenance and help people.
Yes, that is correct. The second agenda item?
Jim, I'm sorry. I have a question. On the elevator contract, it was previously a five-year contract, and can you tell us why they went to a one-year contract?
Yeah, we, we went to a one-year contract because the price had changed during that five-year, and we thought it was time to start looking at maybe other contracts, maintenance contracts. Thyssen Krupp really is the premier maintenance of elevator. They're the, the one that everybody seems to use, I guess you could say. So, there's not a lot of other people out there that, that have these agreements, so that will be found during this process. But we wanted to go out and look for a better, a better price.
Great. Okay. And so, Thyssen Krupp is independent. They are not tied in any way to the manufacturer of the elevator or any sort of, what am I trying to think of, warranty or anything like that?
Yeah, they, they actually are tied to the manufacturing of the elevator. So, it's kind of like, they're, they actually have a manufacturing piece, Thyssen Krupp does, and then they have the maintenance service piece as well. So...
Any other questions?
Okay. Thanks, Jim. Supplemental professional services agreement, number four, from Parsons Brinkerhoff.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. This is, all this is, is a contract extension. So, we had brought our capital facility plan to the planning commission early in the year. We're still working out some details on the capital facility plan. And so, we are asking council to authorize the mayor to sign the supplemental professional service agreement, number four, for the transportation capital facility plan. And that is, like I say, a contract extension only. Any questions on that?
Looks like you're good. Wallace Engineering?
Moving right along. This is a supplemental professional service agreement for Wallace Engineering. And this expenditure is about $5170, or it is $5170 exactly. And this is a supplemental professional service agreement. There were some changes regarding our wastewater treatment plant storage building. And we consolidated things like electrical outlets, did some different mechanical work on the building to lower the contract price originally. So, that's what this, this professional, supplemental professional service agreement is about. Does anybody have any questions on this particular?
You're good for the evening. Thank you, Jim. Okay, moving to administration, professional services agreement for public defense services for a secondary defender. Dave?
Thank you, Mayor, council. Next week, there'll be a professional services agreement before you with Christopher Dumm. As you recall, we have a requirement to have a public defender, and we have engaged a public defender. All of the communities that do that also have what we call a secondary public defender or a conflicts public defender. As you know, in legal ethics, from time to time, there is a conflict that arises because of who's representing who, and they have to step down as the primary. And so, we have a secondary. Mr. Dumm has provided that service for us in the past. This is essentially an extension of that. We would do it again for a couple of years. It's at the same rate. It's a per-case rate. And Don is recommending that. Mr. Dumm's done a great job for us the last couple of years. He's handled just a few cases, really basically a small contract. And the recommended action next week will be to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with Mr. Dumm.
Joyce?
Is he on retainer, and what is his fee?
Yeah, he's basically on retainer. He's on call, if you would. And if a conflict arises, we'd be made aware of that. Or actually, I think they do it right through the courts, and we may not even get involved with it. And the terms are in here, and I will just get to that in a moment. It's $275 per case. And if it goes to jury trial, it's $350. Don indicated that annually, it's on the order of $2,000 to $3,000, which tells me that he's handling about 10 conflict cases a year out of our total caseload, which is not even 10 percent of our cases.
Thank you.
Okay, Joe?
So, is he comparable to the, the other firm that we've hired?
Well, the other firm is compensated in a completely different manner.
Oh, it's a monthly?
It's, it's a flat rate, monthly amount, right? Because this is such, so limited.
Right.
There's just this really modest per-case charge.
Other questions? Comments? Thank you, Dave. Chief Schumacher, you have got a presentation for us this evening.
Yes, we do. And I apologize that the presentation, we're having some problems with Do you have a copy of it before you?
On their iPads. It's in your Dropbox.
There are some other physical copies out front if we need them as well.
Councilmember Russell, can you get the lights? Hey, we apologize. We tried to expand it and it won't advance, so we're not sure what's going on with our presentation. So, again, we apologize for that, and we're just going to have to go with the slides we have. Anyway, we're coming, coming before you on a resolution and an agenda item for an inter-local agreement. Inter-local agreement is to extend the contract that we're continually doing the trial consolidation for a period of 22 months, ending in December of 2013. And the other will be a resolution that'll be put before you that'll last to explore all options of regional fire authority and RFA. So, with that, David, can you take the lead now?
Yeah, before Ron gets into kind of an update on how the consolidation has been going, I just wanted to give a little bit of an overview about where we're at. At the end of this month, our current inter-local agreement with Camus expires, and so we, we have a need to make a decision next week at your meeting as to whether or not we'll continue that inter-local agreement. The inter-local agreement is the supplemental EMS services that we receive by having the ambulance in our firehouse 24/7. That is the mechanism that we have used to do the trial consolidation. We added the trial consolidation feature into that inter-local agreement. So, all of that is expiring here at the end of the month. So, what will be before you is very straightforward. The terms of that agreement stay exactly the same as they have been for this past period of time, except the date pushes out through the end of 13. The other document that's, that will be before you and that you have in your packet is off a resolution that essentially says we're going to participate with others, the city of Camus, but not limited to the city of Camus, we know the city of Camus for now, in a planning committee for a regional fire authority. And we'll get into a lot of those details here as we walk through this presentation. But I think at the beginning, the thing that is important to say is that passing that resolution does not in any way commit the city of Waschuggal to any specific action at all with respect to a regional fire authority. What it does, rather, is make a commitment to explore it in a formal way. And that, that formal way is required by statute that if you are going to kick the tires for a regional fire authority, there are certain things you have to do. And one of those is to create a planning committee. The planning committee is comprised of members or elected officials from the respective community three, from each community that's participating. And again, we'll have, we'll have some of those details and talk about those options. But that is the recommendation from the staff and the administration on how we should move forward. And Ron, let's begin to walk us through why we think that's the prudent move at this time.
Well, in July of 11, there used to be, Camus had two firefighters staffed at the 39th Street Station. And then we brought them into Station 171, just next to the police station. So, we operated with four or five firefighters out of that station, beginning somewhere in, I believe it was July 13. Kind of that's, we tentatively started the consolidation with that, knowing full well that we had, still had to bring another firefighter on board and, and get that firefighter trained and up to speed. So, technically, the trial consolidation started on September 1 of 11, and it was a six-month trial consolidation. So, that six months is expiring on March 1 of this year. So, that, that's what we're going to be asking to extend that for 22 months. So, we've been tracking the savings in the overtime hours since that time, and we've achieved 254 hours. And basically, that started in October. We didn't see any savings in September. And that equates to about almost $14,000 in savings to the city of Waschuggal. Now, on the EMS side, that also saved some money as well. So, that's what we've experienced since October. We anticipate some more savings. We have a couple of our personnel be having some surgery here shortly. And, and with Camus, the way they operate, we will see some of their staff working in our stations while they're off on, recovering from their surgeries. So... Okay, so here's some history here on the overtime budget. And these numbers include all the benefits, social security, retirement, and such. 2008, we spent $209,000, and then you can see the numbers have been coming down. This year, I only budgeted $130,000 anticipating some, some savings because of the consolidation. January, we looked at the numbers in January, and they were quite favorable. So, I, I expected that, that $130,000 will be what we'll be seeing here by years in. Okay? Yeah. I think you're up.
Yeah, I can just wait for the slide.
All right.
Mayor, council's way of introduction. My name is Cliff Free. I'm the division chief of EMS for Camus Fire. Chief Swinhardt sends his apologies, but he's out of the country for this week. He'll be back next week. I'd like to take a couple of minutes just to show you that this has been of mutual benefit of the two agencies, this trial consolidation. And the following slides represent the benefit that Camus has got out of this relationship. As you can see, these are overtime comparison budgets for 2009 to 2012 for both the general fund and the EMS fund. In 2009 to 2010, both our, our general fund overtime and our EMS fund overtime is up there. The interesting part on this slide is that in 2011, we budgeted for the general fund overtime $145,000. What we actually expended in 2011 was only $130,000. This is minus 10.3 percent. And much of that is the direct result of being able to intermingle the labor pools between the two agencies and cover our overtime slots with Waschuggal personnel, like Waschuggal is, is reciprocally doing for us. The EMS fund overtime also saw a reduction. We budgeted $200,000 in 2011, and we actually expended $173,000, which is 13.5 percent under budget. The next slide talks about our call volume. And I think the compelling, it's coming. The compelling thing about this slide is if you look at our total call volume for 2009 to 2010, you'll find that both in total calls and in ambulance transports, those numbers are increasing. Three and a half percent between 9 and 10 for total call volume, and transports were up 6.9 percent. Between 2010 and 2011, it also increased 9.6 percent in total call volume and 5.4 percent in ambulance transports. The interesting thing with this is that despite the fact that our call volume is increasing, we've been able to cut our overtime expenditures with this consolidation. So, essentially, for, we're, with this consolidation, we've been able to manage an increasing number of call volumes. A quick review. For the EMS fund, this is our revenue versus our expenses. You can see in 2009, our revenue outpaced our expenses. We were in the black. 2010, for the first time, our expenses outpaced our revenue. We saw a deficit. In 2011, that deficit remained. Of note, that deficit was expected to be much greater due to a myriad of things. That deficit was, we, we managed to make that deficit down to about $40,000 from our earlier projections of much greater than that. Part of that is due to just our streamlining services, but also the significant amount of savings that we have been able to save in overtime labor by taking advantage, although maybe that's a choice of words, of the Waschuggal personnel. Also of note is in 2012, AV projections being what they are, we are projecting to break even. And in those projections, hopefully with your approval and our city council's approval, we can keep our overtime costs down and make these projections of actually breaking even in 2012. Okay, there it is. There it is. All right. So, just an overview. The EMS fund, just in the six-month period of this merger, it's about $20,000. This is estimated because what we did is made a good faith effort to go through and win a spot opened up that would otherwise cost us overtime, that we could fill in with Waschuggal personnel because they were above their minimum staffing and had that quote-unquote "extra" personnel, although we all know it's not exactly extra personnel. We would tabulate that every time we filled that slot. And the total of that for that six months is about $20,000. We also saved about $5,000 other, other dollars, which we call miscellaneous, which is some consolidation of training, some less redundancy in stocking of medical supplies and that sort of stuff because we were working together. Let me see if I can move this, scroll this down to the bottom of this. Apparently, I can't scroll that down. Now I've done it.
Savings due.
We'll just go to the next slide.
What if you use one?
Apparently, it doesn't like the, well, the bottom of that is on page eight of your handout.
Can these be working more?
We've started.
It's not going to help us out, so we're better known to the handouts. Do you guys have it on your?
I can't find it online.
On your iPads?
There are physical copies out front. If somebody could maybe grab some of those?
Here's my Dropbox, but I don't see it in my Dropbox.
Go to council folder. 2012.
Okay, so it's in a separate.
January, March.
There you go. Oh, see?
Where are you going to be?
Separate folders, huh?
Yeah, they are.
Tricky.
Yeah, except it won't advance.
So, these laptops or our iPads can't be connected to the overscreen?
No, we're not.
Overhead?
We haven't adapted that technology yet.
Okay.
Do you have it here?
I have it on my, I have it too. Thank you, David.
What page are we on?
Yes, see if you can make that.
Pages aren't numbered.
What you have is just a standalone copy of it.
What?
It's not live on the network or anything. That's all this is too. We're having a problem with this laptop.
Well, in, in summary, our expectation for 2012, if we are able to continue the merger, is that it'll save EMS fund about $50,000 for this next year. And that is based on the fact that it saved us about $25,000 in this last six months of last year. So, we're hoping that a full year, especially going through the summer months, which is the, the leanest staffing times, will yield twice the savings of the last six months. Now, we're to the options.
Okay. So, that leaves us, Chief Swinhardt and I, we, we think that there's three options to present to the council. First one is to discontinue the trial consolidation as of March 1 of this year. And then what that would mean is that the ambulance would be pulled out of the station, the Camus personnel would return to the city Camus, Waschuggal personnel that wouldn't be working in Camus would return to our station, and we would be acting like what we were prior to even this Camus moving into the city limits of Waschuggal over two years ago. So, and that's a, the, Chief Swinhardt and I believe that's, we don't recommend that, that option. The next option that would be available would be to, to enact an inter-local agreement between the two agencies, whereas one group would absorb another. So, either the Waschuggal personnel would become Camus personnel, Camus personnel would become part of the Waschuggal Fire Department. And that's not recommended at this time. The, the option that we do recommend is to explore a regional fire authority. And so, what that takes, that would mean we would continue the trial consolidation, and that would, again, extend for 22 months into December of 2013. Along with that, we would establish a planning committee, and then we would, they would make a final determination regarding that. So, and then that would be put to the voters. A regional fire authority has to be put to the voters, and it's 51 percent, to enact an RFA between the two cities. Okay? So, if we had the next slide, we would go to findings by the state legislature and providing for RFAs. In 2004, state of Washington enacted law, RCW, that gave the communities abilities to perform an RFA. And reasoning they did that is ability to respond to emergency situations by many of Washington State's fire protection jurisdictions has not kept up with the state's need, particularly in urban regions. Second reason they gave, providing a fire protection service system requires a shared partnership and responsibility among the federal, state, local, and regional governments and the private sector.
Chief?
Yes?
Joyce?
What is an RFA?
Regional fire authority.
It's a regional fire authority. Think of it as a fire district. It's somewhat similar to a fire district, whereas the district would have commissioners. The fire, a regional fire authority would have three elected personnel from each city that would be on a committee. So, it would have more local that would be on a committee. So it would have more local controls. Third reason they gave for enacting the ability to create an RFA is there are efficiencies to be gained by regional fire protection service delivery while retaining local control. The fourth is timely development of significant projects can best be achieved through enhanced funding options for regional fire protection service agencies using already existing taxing authority to address fire protection, emergency service needs, and new authority to address critical fire protection projects and emergency services. So the problems out there that, again, by, you know, we can't do it all by ourselves. And so the state's looking at that and saying, maybe the two communities can combine together and deliver a better service as well as maintaining costs too. The next slide would have showed that currently there are seven RFAs in the state and the closest one to us is Riverside Fire Authority and that's in Lewis County and that's the City of Centralia and Lewis County 12 and that was formed in 2007. There have been other attempts at forming RFAs. I believe Kitsap County tried and they created the planning committee and then they dissolved. Chief Swinhardt out of Aberdeen, they also created, they were going to do seven departments, I believe what he said, and that pulled it as well. So there have been some out there that through the planning committee process, they just deemed that all the parties involved couldn't come to agreement and so it was never presented to the voters and was disbanded. Alright, so the questions to ask yourselves is, are we considering an RFA for the benefit of our citizens? Are we considering an RFA to gain efficiencies for the benefit of our citizens? And thirdly, are we considering an RFA to improve the overall level of service, standards of coverage, and enhance services for the benefit of our citizens? And Chief Swinhardt and I looked at these and we agreed that yes, yes, yes to all three. And so that's why we're asking to proceed. We do agree that we're doing it for the benefit of our citizens. Here in Washougul, we never had an ambulance before. We never had advanced life support. Sometimes our second ambulance was in Grass Valley. So we could get a 12 to 15 minute response from an advanced life support ambulance from Grass Valley, just say it looks to Washougul. Right now, we have a, two paramedics on duty 24/7 within the city. So we think it's a benefit to our citizens. Are we considering RFA to gaining efficiencies for the benefits of our citizens? I believe we've demonstrated somewhat that we see some cost savings that we've had between the two organizations. And then lastly, are we considering RFA to improve the overall level of service, standards of coverage, and enhance services for the benefit of our citizens? City of Washougul, city of CAMUS, never had a full-time training officer. Now we do, we share Captain Sorry as our training officer. He's done, it's just in the short time he's been in there, we've just gained, we've made a lot of leaps in our training and scheduling, training and all that. So it's been a real asset to us. So again, I feel that we've improved our level of service, our standards of coverage. We're responding to the scene a lot faster with ALS with more personnel. So a little bit about regional fire authorities, that's on your next slide. Municipal corporation which allows fire districts, municipalities, city departments, or tribal nations to join together for the provision of fire and emergency services. So what can an RFA do? How can they be combined? We can bind fire district to fire district, okay? We can do city to city, so that would be us with CAMUS and Washougul. Or they can do a fire district to city or any combination, okay? So an RFA operates very similar to a fire district. And what that means that again, it's about local control. If we were to form a fire district, East County Fire and Rescue could ask the two city councils here to become part of their district. And then they would go ahead and they would be a fire district and they would run, basically run the fire operations. And our city councils would have no local say, you know, into how that operation is ran, basically. So we believe that an RFA allows that community's support and members on the council to serve in that capacity to support their fire department. So that's one of the big options or a big pluses for an RFA. Okay, implementation. Any two or more adjacent fire protection jurisdictions may create a regional fire protection service authority and convene a regional fire protection service authority planning committee. No fire protection jurisdiction may participate in more than one authority. Each governing body interested must make the decision to research the possibility of regional fire authority with, that has continuous and adjacent fire departments. So this can be a full organization subset, that means training, special operations, or paramedic. And again, we're asking to do the full organization. If the council deemed and the city council and CAMUS, they just wanted to do an ALS agreement with the RFA, they can do that as well. So where do we go from here? The governing bodies send letters to each other indicating their desire to study the possibility of forming an RFA. The governing bodies must appoint three members each to form a planning committee and these are three elected officials from any involved fire district or city. And then exactly, you might have questions about what a planning committee is. So the RFA has the strengths built around the formation of a planning committee who establishes a vision, operational aspects, and funding methodology for the RFA prior to taking it to the ballot for citizens in all affected areas to determine if the RFA is right for them. So not only is there a planning committee, then there are subcommittees. There'll be operations. There'll be a committee that'll even figure out what name do we want for the new fire department? And what logo do we want? You know, those types of things. So there'll be several subcommittees. There'll be a financial subcommittee, an operations subcommittee. Naming, you name it, we could, there'll be subcommittees out there. I know there's, in various ones that are out there, there's a, they can have six to 10 subcommittees. And typically, those members probably will be made up of the ad hoc committees. There'll be a subcommittee with the labor group as far as getting the two labor contracts in line with each other. So there'll be a lot of subcommittees. I don't want to scare you off, I think that the RFA committee will be handling everything. There'll be a bunch of subcommittees as well. So once the subcommittee has forwarded everything to the planning committee, then it's up to the planning committee to put it before the voters. And with that, it needs a simple majority is necessary to pass the measure in order to pass the RFA, but it does not need a simple majority in each city. So if the city CAMUS, you know, they pass it 61 to 39 and the city Washougul defeats it, but there might be, you know, not as many people in the city Washougul, it may still pass. So that's another thing to consider. And then I'm not sure if there was the handout?
Well, we're trying to get that back up on the screen. In your Dropbox, council, the third document for the evening was a Word document called Financial Handouts. I'm not sure if you were able to pull that up. It would be in the hard copy at the very, very last page. So I will be referring to this.
As the chief mentioned, forming a planning committee does not obligate this council or the CAMUS council to any specific action with respect to an RFA and nor does the planning committee have the authority to establish an RFA. Only the voters have the authority to establish an RFA and to adopt a service plan. The establishment of a planning committee for a regional fire authority does not obligate either council to actually refer the service plan and the formation of an RFA to the voters. And at any point during the process, we could withdraw, or CAMUS could withdraw, or we could mutually decide to not proceed. So just to, again, clarify and elaborate what it doesn't mean and what it does mean. Anticipating that there might be some questions about, you know, what does this RFA do that we don't already do? Or what could it do that we don't already do through an interlocal agreement? And really, the main differential is that the legislature provided through the RFA vehicle funding options, more choices for how communities can fund their fire department. And then it provides for the opportunity for multiple agencies to get together to get efficiencies from economies of scale such that we've already observed, like with the training officer and the overtime savings. So it allows for a community or a group of communities to decide what level of service they want mutually and then if they want to take advantage of the various funding options that are available through an RFA that wouldn't otherwise be available. And in the handout, there's an explanation of really the two primary funding options. One is a regular tax levy. It's no different than what currently exists. So that's really no change. It's just that the RFA would become the taxing authority as opposed to the general purpose governments, the cities. If that is the vehicle for financing that is in front of the voters, a 50% vote of the voters would set that in motion. And it's limited similarly to ours at $1.50 per $1,000 of assessed value. There's another funding mechanism that exists only for RFAs and it's called a benefit charge. And it can take different forms and some of these RFAs are imposing a benefit charge and others are not. And a benefit charge can look at the type of facilities that we serve and assess a charge based upon the demand for services that they present to the system as opposed to a property value-based distribution system, if you would. So it's a different way of carving out who pays what for fire and emergency management services. It's not required that an RFA use a benefit charge, but it's an option. If a benefit charge is going to be utilized, then the voting mechanisms are different about the percentages that are required and et cetera. They can only be 60% of the total budgeted expenses and they can't be imposed for a period of longer than six years. So I think the legislature's intent was that an RFA and a community would kick the tires on that and then decide again after six years. Whereas your levy is your levy and it just stays. You don't have to go back every six years. We don't have to go back every six years. On the chart, and I won't go into great detail there, but in the middle of the page, there's a chart that shows varying dollar amounts that would be derived from different levy rates. And it's this type of analysis and these types of options that the planning committee would be exploring, which is why I'm not proposing that we go into this in depth this evening. We talked about it at some length with the ad hoc committee in where we had a little more informal setting, but it's just to provide you with a range of what ifs of how levy and benefit charge can be combined to provide funding. It's important to remember that when an RFA is created, for every dollar of levy that is assigned to the RFA, that's a dollar of levy that is not available to the general purpose government. But then for every expenditure that goes over to the RFA, that's a dollar of expenditure that the community wouldn't have to have in its general purpose government. So the idea is it's just simply moving it into a different entity if you only use the levy. But again, the planning committee's job is to explore this in great detail and to determine what if any plan to present to the voters would be appropriate, looking at levy and looking at benefit charges as some of the options. The benefit charge does provide an opportunity if it would be the desire of both councils and the desire of the voters to provide for what could be considered additional revenues in this area of service delivery that would not otherwise be available, potentially freeing up general purpose, general fund dollars for the cities. But that would be very clear in a service plan if that was recommended by the planning committee and if it was the pleasure of each council to even refer that to the voters. So the basis for our recommendation to move forward with the planning committee is that we believe that we've been charged with exploring all of the options to get our hands around the dilemma of EMS funding and the issues around funding for fire and EMS services. And we believe that to fully evaluate all of the options, we need to go all the way with the RFA exploration and the only way to do that is with a committee. If we don't do that, we can't really explore it. By extending the trial consolidation through the end of 2013, that gives us hopefully adequate time to do that. And the timing is actually very good for us. Was actually discussing this with council member Shoemaker late last week. He was reminding me and making a good point that part of the reason for our trial consolidation was our mutual commitment to continue to explore solutions to the longer-term funding issues that are facing our delivery of EMS services in the community. And we both agreed very quickly that the trial consolidation in and of itself and even an RFA, just generally speaking, aren't necessarily a complete solution to the situation. They are facets of or components of the solution. And by leveraging the savings that we're getting right now through the trial consolidation during the evaluation period with the planning committee for the RFA, at least we can continue to enjoy those efficiencies in the short term while we continue to explore all of the options around our EMS services. We're not prepared to engage on this, this evening, but at some point coming up later in this year, we'll be coming back to talk to you about the longer-term financial outlook, at least from our side of the table with respect to the EMS program. As you may know, our levy lid lift expires at the end of this year. That was the, a six-year 10 cent lift that was voter approved. And the community, I understand, was very supportive of that, that dime per thousand. And this is not part of the handout that's in front of you right now, just some preview of that conversation. But as you know, we received supplanting monies because of the unique mechanics of that levy lid lift and how assessed valuation was doing so well in some previous years that we've got a balance in Fund 125 that's restricted to fire and EMS services. That is a great benefit to the community. And what that means is that in spite of the economic issues facing the community and our assessed valuations and our levy, it means that in 2013, after the expiration of the levy lid lift, monies that were collected previously exist to essentially take the place of a lid lift and there's adequate monies in there that we can continue to cooperate with CAMUS and have an ambulance here 24/7 using those funds to provide the dime that we are to contribute as part of that. We'll be able to do that for all of 2013 through the fund balance that was accumulated from that as well as taking care of some fire department expenses that we've been using those funds for over the last couple of years to help make sure that our general fund is balanced. So that's very good news because it's expiring at the end of this year. All else equal or otherwise, we would be having to make a decision about what to do about that for 13. Because of the fund balance, we don't have to make that decision in 2012 for 13. We can make that decision in 13 for 14, which helps us have some time to further evaluate what's going on with assessed valuation, to explore if it's the pleasure of both councils, this regional fire authority, and whether or not there's opportunities there. And to package together a replacement lid lift, if that's the pleasure of the council to go back and do that dime again, or some other mechanism separately or as part of an RFA to make sure that we fund that. And when we begin to have those conversations, we'll be talking about what all those choices are, what the implications are for doing them or for not doing them on the expenditure side and on the revenue side. side and on the revenue side. And we believe with this planning committee, looking at the RFA and all of that taken together, we'll be able to, we hope, paint a very clear picture for the council about what the various options are and what the implications are so you can make the best decision for the community. But just wanted to make sure that you knew that we were working hard on the longer-term problem. We want to bring you options. We acknowledge and recognize that this trial consolidation is not an end in itself. It's a step, and it incrementally is saving us money, and so it makes sense to us to keep doing it while we continue to work on it. I think I'll probably leave it at that with respect to the financial part of the RFA. Again, that would be the planning committee's probably primary responsibility is to evaluate that and the service levels. The RFA, excuse me, the resolution that's part of your packet for next week is the new document. You've seen the inter-local agreement before. It's really the same one that you had the last time. It just pushes the date out. That resolution essentially sets the planning committee process in motion. It says the council's doing this. If CAMUS also approves, then we would create a planning committee. You would need to appoint three elected officials from Washougal to that planning committee, and it's the administration's recommendation that you have the Public Safety Committee members be those members. The resolution doesn't necessarily say that because you have the Appointments Committee that has to get together and then bring a slate for something like this to the council. So if it would be the Appointments Committee's pleasure this week, potentially, to get together and consider perhaps the Public Safety Committee members as the three elected officials who would be tapped to be on the planning committee with colleagues from CAMUS, then that slate could come forward along with the resolution and the inter-local agreement next week. CAMUS considered both of these documents at their workshop last week, and they will be considering it for action at their meeting as well next week on the 21st.
Our secondary resolution, Dave, does have the three members in the resolution.
Right. I think it points to the Appointments Committee looking at them, or I can't remember. The mechanics would be maybe you would, just, those are just the semantics of the process. There's an Appointments Committee, and then they would recommend that, and then the council in passing the resolution would accept that and just put it in the resolution, I think is the order we would probably look at that. And I think the CAMUS council is looking at three council members to do that as well. And I don't believe they have a Public Safety Committee, but they do have two members that have been serving on the ad hoc group that I believe that they're looking at, and then one other council member. So that's a lot of information. We certainly understand that and appreciate that. We did spend quite a bit of time with the ad hoc committee, working on it recently, and we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Just basically kind of combined the subjects of the two agenda bills that we would have under fire for next week. So questions, comments on either one of them, either the establishment of the committee or under the continuation of the inter-local for EMS and the trial consolidation. Dave?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, it's been a pleasure to participate in this fire consolidation committee and work with the professionals that we've got in CAMUS and Washougal, the fire professionals. Very educational. Also, it's really wonderful to work with people who are so dedicated, and especially when you consider that they're out risking their lives to save money and lives for us. Dave, tonight, I think you've addressed, at least for the time being, my concern, and that is that this consolidation, although I think it's a good thing and it's certainly something I wanted to support, up until tonight I wasn't willing to support it because I hadn't heard the inclusion of the effort to solve the long-term structural imbalance in the EMS fund. That's, I hear what you're saying, that's going to be part of this process. It'll give us time. We benefit from the levy monies that we have, the lid lift monies. Gives us time to do that. So I'll support this thing for now, but before I'll vote for the, to support the final product, I want to see what the solution is to solve that structural imbalance. That's an absolute requirement for my vote, although I think I'd be overwhelmed by a flood of people in support of it anyway, but that's my concern. I would like to ask a question about the findings of the legislature. I think it was the second slide on that. The last item, it says, "Timely development of significant projects can best be achieved through enhanced funding options for regional fire protection service agencies, using already existing taxing authority to address fire protection emergency service needs and new authority to address critical fire protection projects and emergency services." A lot of words in there, a lot of concepts, but I think that boils down to we need more money.
I think that would be perhaps one way to coin it. I think what they are saying here is there may be the need for different options for funding for very specific things, and we want to give the locals the ability to have those options. Here's the mechanism. The mechanism will be this new type of animal that we haven't had before, the RFA. And through that RFA and a very deliberative process, which ultimately is the voter's choice, there are more options to looking at how to fund the desired level of service in the community. That could mean, if the community is supportive of it, if the council even would put it before the community, additional revenues.
I think it's absolutely essential to put it to a vote, and I look forward to doing that. And if you can show me how we're going to solve that structural imbalance, I'll go out and stump for this thing because I believe in it. I believe in what these guys do, but I've got to solve that one problem first.
Right. And thank you very much.
And thank you for taking the time.
That may be one of the biggest issues, I think, that the community is facing right now. This is a very, obviously, very important area of service delivery for the community, and one of our biggest challenges will be how, are we going to go back out for the lid lift, or what other way are we going to get after that? So we're looking forward to solving that problem and using this process to do it. Just as an interesting sidebar, I just remembered this. There's, I don't know where it's at exactly, although I could probably find it in real time here, they have a great website at the legislature, but there's a bill that essentially allows a single city, and I'm not suggesting that this is what we should do. I just saw this in my research the other day, that allows a single city to essentially carve out a fire entity and separate it from its general budget and then have the same funding options that an RFA has. But you could do it unilaterally, not, you wouldn't have to be in conjunction with a contiguous agency such as another city or with a district. So the legislature is, I believe, hearing the message from locals, which is let us figure out how to take care of these problems and give us tools, and then we'll decide whether we want to use them or not.
I like the idea of local control. And, Mr. Mayor, I have to tell you, I've worked with a lot of the staff on this issue, and you've got a bunch of really good listeners on this staff, and I appreciate that they're taking the time to listen to my concerns and respond to them.
Appreciate you making that comment. John, you had your head up.
Yeah. Great presentation. Thank you for giving the financials on the current consolidation. Just had a few things to bring up. One on the current consolidation and as we move forward on a two-year. One of the things that's not in there mentioned is the volunteers and how much they actually save us money throughout the consolidation, because I really think that they play a huge part in the cost savings that we get because of their time and effort that they put in. So that may be something to also calculate in there to kind of give us a financial, I know you can't get it exact because some of it's just intangible, but just to give us some idea of how much money the volunteers have saved us over the consolidation.
We have 23 volunteers right now, and our budget for the volunteers is less, I think it's $67,000 or somewhere in there. So it's less than a full-time firefighter. So yes, they do save a lot of money having volunteers. And we are looking at expanding that, and so CAMUS, they'll be seeing some volunteers working out of the CAMUS fire station as well.
Okay. I think that the Fire Authority does have great potential. I think one of the biggest concerns we had was the cost of Medicare/Medicaid on our EMS system and how it was going to, I mean, long-term, I mean, just basically was blowing our EMS out of the water. I think this could be a solution to solving that problem. I don't know if it's the silver bullet, but it's definitely, it's the best plan that I've seen so far of how to address that inefficiency. So one thing to just think about in that regard. The other is, has, on the Fire Authority, have we engaged ECFER at all in becoming a partner in that, seeing that they are a levy partner?
Not, at this point, not to any great degree. We have invited them in for a number of the discussions that certainly affect the EMS service levels and those issues in regards to the consolidation between the two departments. We haven't because, quite frankly, it involves the two departments. And before we start, at least from my standpoint, before we start looking at beginning to involve ECFER into coming into that, which, if you remember back a few years ago, the three entities were in those discussions, and those kind of fell apart. So at this point, my caution is, let's see where this may go between the two cities before we begin to inject another entity into the entire thing.
I hear you.
Although in furthering that question, that's also why the resolutions in front of you mention the cities of CAMUS and Washougal at a minimum, but not to exclude others that may come along later, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions, Scotty, Joe?
Not a question, just a comment that we've had a presentation first at our retreat and then at the Public Safety ad hoc meeting tonight, and I'm just thrilled to learn how well CAMUS and Washougal are partnering in this. Got to spend some time with the CAMUS mayor and a few of his council members this weekend, and they were talking about rivalries between the two cities and how that football and years gone by, there were lots of rivalries. And I'm thrilled that at this stage of the game, there's a great partnership, and I've seen it as a testimony from both departments. So I'm proud of you guys and appreciate it.
Other questions for the two chiefs? You guys can get off the hook easy. A couple of things I wanted to make sure and point out as you refer back to the presentations that you've got, there are a couple of different savings areas, well, I guess, three different savings areas really that we're looking at, and they get easily combined into one or the other. We've certainly got, from the trial consolidation now, we've certainly got some savings that are being realized by the Emergency Medical Services Fund itself, which is a completely separate entity. We've got the Washougal Fire Fund, the CAMUS Fire Fund, and the EMS Fund. And through the trial consolidation, as you saw in the presentation, we certainly have some savings going into that EMS Fund just from overtime and bodies. Try not to miss, though, the fact that we also have savings because of the trial consolidation that are going to the city of Washougal and to the city of CAMUS as well, just on bodies, those sharing of bodies that are going back and forth between the stations and the ability for us to move people and keep that rather than having to call in another firefighter on overtime. And the final comment, I know all of the paperwork is pretty much put together to talk about a two-year, pushing this out for a two-year period. From my standpoint, I guess I would venture that it is for up to a two-year period. Certainly, if we can get questions answered, we can get better data in, all those type of things, in order to make a decision sooner than that, that is, I think, everybody's best interest to do that. What we didn't want to do is continually come back every six months and ask for extensions, ask for extensions. So the idea was to go out and ask for something that is reasonable out to the end of 2013 for the trial consolidation, but it can certainly come back and be consummated before that or completely disbanded before that, should that be the wishes of the council, so. Jennifer?
Yeah, I wanted to go ahead and ask my questions real quick. It's a lot of information, very big move for the two cities. Essentially, we're setting up another government entity. It's an entity that can tax, charge fees, levies, issue levies and bonds. Basically, they can apply for grants. It's a whole new animal, as you said. My concerns are with the ballot measures and the fact that CAMUS is larger and what Chief was mentioning, that, you know, when they go out for increases or when they go out for bonds and such, you know, CAMUS will definitely have an advantage over Washougal just in sheer size and number of voters. Also, regarding the planning committee, I just printed out a bit of the RCW from the state's website, and they talk about compensation and startup costs and funding sources and things like that. Have we investigated any of that?
We're not intending to compensate planning committee members. I think the statute provides that, if, that we could do that, but we're not proposing that. I think it was $70 a day. And then the startup, the other part that you mentioned, is if the entity can't get itself started, if you would, without some seed money from the state, that if so appropriated, and I'm not aware that there is such an appropriation in the state general fund budget, I may be mistaken on that, if so appropriated, they'll start you up, and then you have to pay it back after a period of time. We have, I think that that would be, one of the responsibilities of the planning committee would be, you know, how do we start this thing off? But I don't believe that that would be something that would be necessary here, given that we've got. The way you can time the votes, again, if that's the will of the councils to even go out and ask, the way you can time them is such that you have a revenue stream that starts in time to get it started, but we would work through those details.
Okay. Great. I just, you kind of went over one of my other questions, which was the difference between a tax and a benefit charge. It was really complicated, and thank you for going into the nuances and the differences. Let's see. Yeah. It goes into a lot of details about employees and professional service contracts and such. So, no, I think you answered my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chiefs?
Yes, one of the advantages to having the RFA is that we'll have equal representation on the, so there'll be three elected members from this body here and three elected members from CAMUS.
Does the committee, I'm sorry to interrupt, but does the committee go on to also be the governing board? Is that how that works?
No.
Okay. And then, of course, the RCW provides for something called a commissioner position, and there's all kinds of layers to this particular type of a government entity.
Right. But one of the things, though, before anything is brought to a vote, you know, one member from this city would have to vote, yes, well, we shall bring it to the voters, because it'll have to be like a four-to-two vote. So we'll do have some type of equal representation, even though we may not have the populace.
So to get at that a little bit, the planning committee has no, the planning committee really has no authority. It's not statutorily constructed to have any real authority, but it does make a recommendation, and it requires a majority of the planning committee to make a recommendation. So that's why at least one member from each respective entity would have to vote. So that's why at least one member from each respective entity would have to vote to forward something to the councils. That's just a recommendation. The governing body of an RFA, if the Planning Committee recommends we even go there, and then if the councils refer it to the voters, and if the voters decide to do an RFA, the govern, part of the service plan for the RFA is what is the governing body? And what's really great about it is that the service plan defines what the governing body is. So the governing body could be constituted as, is exactly the same as a Planning Committee. It doesn't have to use commissioners, which is, but it, it provides for that. And that could be because sometimes districts become part of an RFA and they don't have that ready group of, and they would no longer be a district. There's still a council in a city, and so there's a ready pool of elected officials to put onto a governing body. But if the district isn't there, then there isn't a ready pool of elected officials other than county commissioners. So it probably provides for an opportunity in that context, might be the most germane, where you could look at some commissioners. Lots and lots of options, but nothing is prescribed. It's, it's really up to the service plan. And so I would imagine that both communities would want to set up a governing body in such a way that the voice of one individual community was equally weighted with the voice of the other individual community in arriving at decisions. And so that the decision really had to have some strong consensus for it to move past, such as should we go out for a bond? Should we increase our budget or not? All of the types of decisions that come in front of you as a council. So, but those will be all the interesting things we can, that the Planning Committee can look into and try and come up with something that potentially could work.
Any other questions, comments? Chief, thank you. Chief Free, thank you for being here this evening. I will take a minute on a little personal note. We had a, we had unfortunately, a personal experience with your medical services this weekend up at our home. And it was, it was gratifying to see that, I think, within four or five minutes of, of making the call to, to 911, we had one of our police units here from the city that responded, that had an EMT or a paramedic, followed by Engine 171 that had a Canvas paramedic and a Washougal firefighter on board, followed by an ambulance from Canvas that had the same Canvas and Washougal contingent on board, followed by other patrol cars and everything else. And it's neat to see the system work. I think it was nice for all the folks who were at our home, with the exception of one couple that's out of the area. Everybody else lives here and got to see that response themselves coming into the living room. So it, it works and it's, it's nice to see the, the two different shoulder patches showing up and everybody just doing what it is that they do. So thank you to the, to the folks who were on duty on Saturday evening. Our next item is a discussion item in regards to eVerify and House Bill 2568. I think Council Member Shoemaker, you had asked that this one come onto the agenda for discussion.
I had, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. And I'm looking for my notes. Ah, here they are. My, my concern here is that the state has HB 2568, which seeks to limit or preclude the use of eVerify by cities and subordinate governments and state agencies. And I, I think frankly, that the state is trying to usurp the authority of the city to do its job. I neither want nor need the state to tell me how to manage our internal affairs here in Washougal. And so there's a resolution that was used in Pierce County. I think that's going to be put forward. And when it is, I'd like to add to it a final whereas that says something along the lines of whereas HB 2568 usurps the legitimate authority of the city of Washougal to manage its internal affairs, now therefore, we don't support it. And I, I think eVerify is valuable. I think it's necessary. And I'm incensed that the state would try to interfere in our ability to use it to manage our own internal affairs here in the city of Washougal. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Do we know what the status of 2568 is? Did it survive?
Mr. Mayor?
I believe it is. Candace Bach from AWCI emailed her at 4:30 and she said that it, it was still alive. She emailed five minutes later and said it'd been scheduled for a vote tonight. And it was, I have, I have their floor activity report live in front of me right now. And before our meeting, it was one of two that were scheduled. I just refreshed it. It's not there anymore. I thought, oh, they voted on it. There's no record of a vote. So they've either voted on it and they haven't updated their website, or it was scheduled for a vote tonight and they were going into session at six and they decided not to vote on it. Tomorrow is the cutoff. So if it doesn't pass on a floor vote tomorrow by the House, then it wouldn't, it wouldn't move on and wouldn't survive the session. That's always with the caveat that there are opportunities to insert these types of things into other bills, as you, as you're aware. But it would have not passed that. So if the, if it was the council's pleasure to, as a body formally advocate to the legislature, no matter what happens with it, I think there's still opportunity for that. Obviously, you couldn't take that action until next Tuesday to, to pass a resolution, for example. So it'll be too late to formally advocate to the House. But if it was to pass the House tonight or tomorrow, you could advocate to the Senate. If it doesn't pass the House, you could still advocate because, as you know, they can revive them. Things can be revived. So.
Would you be so kind as to help us put together a resolution which says essentially, kill this thing? You, you can do that much better than I can.
Well, the resolution's already created from Pierce County. So we would just reuse their language and just change the names. If that would be the will of the council.
Great idea.
So does, I guess, a silly question, does somebody have a resolution that staff or the administration haven't seen yet that, that you're going to walk on for next week?
I think, I think he has. And I just got it in that email today.
If, if, Mayor, if it's the council's pleasure, we can have a resolution ready for them for their meeting next week, for the meeting next week, as opposed to doing a walk-on.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, just for the benefit of the other counselors, the newer counselors, and for the public, eVerify is a federal program that we utilize to verify that our contractors that, that we pay to do work in the city are hiring legal workers. And so it's, it's a free service and it's provided to us to make sure that our tax money's being spent wisely. So it's something we've been using. It's something that a lot of cities, counties in the state of Washington are using. And this particular piece of legislation will make it illegal for us to use eVerify to make sure that our contractors are using legal workers.
There's some inconsistency here, too, because if the state decides that it's, they're going to ban it from, you know, cities or counties from using this eVerify, because it's still a federal program, if we take federal funds, don't we still have to require that from our contractors?
Potentially. I believe there was a, an amendment that was passed into the, into the bill in a, in a amended version that provides a safety valve that if we have to do it because of some federal program where we're receiving funds or otherwise participating in the federal program, that we would not be preempted from doing that. So that's a welcome amendment, certainly, because we wouldn't want to be precluded from some of the routine types of federal programs that we participate with, because we were precluded from complying with any of the strings that are attached. So that, that part is in there and it's, employers can voluntarily use eVerify. And I believe there's some examples of that out there. But we would not be able to require it of them unless we were required to require it of them because of the federal program. So it is good that that was added in. I think that was in late last month that amendment was put in.
So in regards to council members that are here tonight, if, if you don't mind, if we can go around and just in regards to the, or House Bill 2568, if, if we can get some sort of a read of, you know, whether you're potentially in favor of that or not in favor of that, we may be able to take some steps even before the House votes, if they haven't already, in order to get some information to our legislators. So John, your thoughts?
I'm not in favor of the House bill, no.
Okay. Joyce?
Not sure.
Good.
No, I'm not in favor of the House bill.
I'm not in favor.
Can I, Joe?
I am not in favor.
I'm not either. So why don't, why don't, one, let's get this to Don to put it into our form as quickly as possible and get it out to all the council members. I want to make sure that everybody's got time enough, since this thing is new and it's, while we're discussing it tonight, we're not really discussing it with it in front of everybody. But either this evening yet or first thing in the morning, I will, I will get a communication out to all of our representatives on both the 15th and the 17th to make sure that we are taking care of what we need to, to illustrate to them that we do have eVerify in use by the city, that it works fine for us. We have no, no problems with it whatsoever and find it as a useful tool. And we would hope that they would allow us the flexibility to continue using that as well. And then next week, certainly if we've got, still got time for the House, if they haven't taken it up by then, but certainly on the Senate side, because it's going to get tossed over there into a committee if it makes it through. If they don't do that this week, that resolution may make it up there in time as well to, to be physically in their hands. Okay?
Thank you.
Any, anything else on eVerify?
Mayor, just to, as a reminder, Councilman Shoemaker also requested earlier in the year that we workshop the concept of lowering the threshold. And we do have that scheduled and I can't remember what the date was, but it's, I think it might be next month. If it's not later this month, then it's next month. That'll be on the agenda.
Thank you. And recommendation coming from staff at this point is still to take it down to zero?
Yeah, I'm not, not so sure we're recommending that per se. I think any threshold that you would, would desire as a council, I think we can work with it.
Just minus the COTS, right? Because I mean, obviously, we don't want to have to go to bed for COTS for just routine vendors. I mean, that.
Yeah, that's what we can talk about at the workshop. We can talk about what the implications would be and, and we'll try to, I understand your point, crafted in such a way that we don't have unintended consequences perhaps for buying, buying things, is what you're getting at, that if we buy
Just hiring the subcontractors.
Things from somebody that's an international company or something.
Yeah, we, yeah, just.
Right. It's for services, right? And there'll be, we'll have good discussion on that when we, when we bring that forward. There's a lot of information we can share with you.
Okay. Any other items on eVerify? Okay, we are at that point for any members of the public that would like to address council.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors. My name is George Coling, 2047 North Pete Street, here in Washougal. It's nice to know that our city still has manifest destiny as one of its options, such as the eVerify. Somebody's telling us no from Olympia. We said no to that. We still want to. I remember a case years ago, couple house burned down, general contractor sent them a bill for jobs that were not done, like eighty, hundred thousand, a hundred twenty thousand. This was before eVerify ever became a vocabulary word anywhere. So I propounded discovery as an attorney, right? Can you give me the social story numbers and identities of your employers, your employees, your unemployment compensation payments, stuff like that to verify that they even have people that can do the job that their clients are being sued for? Less than a month later, they settled pennies on the dollar. Sure, they did some mediocre work, but pennies on the dollar. So yes, I think things were being done back then that eVerify can put it into now, especially when you're dealing with taxpayers' dollars in contracts for the city's interests. Now, that and this, you know, RFA thing, okay, I really like that right now Washougal and Canvas both come to the table with equal bargaining powers. Each city represents its citizens' desires and wishes. What concerns me now, everything was going cozy till I read that voter approval and Councilor McGann, I thank you for bringing that up. So this means that a simple minority in Canvas can dictate to a, a simple majority in Washougal. Well, that's fine, okay? The problem is this other thing, you know, then you need a 60% voter approval for increases in taxes. Washougal has lost its own manifest destiny at that point. Can you say no, well, we're going to, you know, delineate, line out these provisions and say both have approval? When does that say on my own time?
You've got a minute.
That's all I'm saying. I mean, if, I, I know we're not a democracy. We are a republic. But just something in that just gives me the wrong taste. I like it when we come up and Canvas comes up on an equal bargaining power. That's just, you know, the American way. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Any other members of the public? John?
John Wagner, 67, Southeast, 21th question. The eVerify, if the council is against it, the resolution might make you feel good. And right now, with the legislature approaching cutoff dates, I would suggest you contact the lobbyists, the lobbyists for municipalities who talk to the legislators every day, appears before them in committees, and would be a much, much more powerful way of getting that message across. So that's kind of how things work up there. I have a lot of experience in that area. So I would suggest you, whoever is lobbying on behalf of your municipalities can be the person to contact right away. Just a suggestion.
Thank you, John. Anyone else from the public that would wish to address council? Okay. Under updates, Mayor's report, the only item that I have for you this evening, I was honored to attend on Friday, the, the fire unions for Canvas and Washougal, their annual dinner. Very well put together. Captain Sari, I believe, received his, his 20-year paid professional, 25? So is it 30 years with volunteers?
Twenty-five.
Okay. Twenty-five year award, in addition to three or four of our other employees that were recognized as well. So that was a neat little event. I understand we have one for the volunteers later this week as well. So David, any other items from your side?
Just as a reminder, council, I believe you now have the official invitation from the Washougal School District for a meeting coming up later in the month for their strategic planning and visioning. Encourage you to attend. I received one and I'm assuming the mayor received one. I'll try to make it if I can on Thursday night, but very much appreciated that they're reaching out to, to their city government.
Items from council? John?
Mr. Wagner brought up a great point. Do we know, is AWCI taking a position on the eVerify bill? And are they lobbying on our behalf since they are a lobbying agent?
They have not. I did communicate with Candace after Councilman Shoemaker asked us to bring this forward to find out if AWCI had a position on it and where the bill was at. She indicated that they hadn't brought it, you know, through the process for taking a position. And I think they've been getting input on both sides of the issue. think they've been getting input on both sides of the issue. So as you can imagine, on any number of different issues at AWC, sometimes the consensus is readily apparent and other times it's not, and I think on this one, the way things are moving, sometimes at the House, there wasn't enough time to see if there was a consensus out of the legislative committee for it, so right now I don't believe there's any position at all, just to watch.
Yeah, it's hard when your largest city in this state is actually supporting the bill, so hard that you're going to go against him.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other items? Other councilmembers? Can I, Joe?
It's too bad I didn't know about it sooner. I just spent two days with AWC. Joyce and I spent two days with AWC, and we could have had their ear. We had a great time together, went up on the train to Tacoma, spent all day Friday and most of Saturday, being completely overwhelmed with an awful lot of legalese, but great organization, great information, nice big workbook to work from, had some great interaction with lots of cities and council members and mayors, got to spend time with Camas, they were there, studying parliamentary procedure, and boy, oh, boy, we're going to look to you guys, that's for sure, Joyce and I, us newbies. So thank you for sending us.
Did you guys not pass Ann's class?
Oh, we passed with flying colors, yeah. Was there a test? No, there was no test, so yeah, we passed. We did interact a lot, we did a lot of role-playing, it was a lot of fun. Again, it was very serious-minded, too, and lots of information, but thank you for sending us. Look forward to more training down the road. And another issue is that this Saturday, ladies of Camas Waschugle are being invited to the Community Pregnancy Clinic's fifth annual Ladies Tea. If there's any ladies like to join me, I have some spaces at my table still. Going to be a great fundraiser and a chance to dress up and drink tea together and honor the young women in our community on methods to help them in crisis. So thank you.
Okay. First.
I, too, want to thank the city for the workshop. It was just fact-filled, it was a wonderful opportunity. We did not have a workshop on budget, which will happen in June, and we'll be attending that, but it was well worth our time.
Yeah, I'm glad you both went out.
Very good.
Any other items from council? Okay, the last item I have is just a reminder that we are not meeting next Monday, we're meeting on Tuesday due to the federal holiday, so we'll be here at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, the 21st. With that, we're adjourned.